Okay, we'll get started. We might as well get all this on record. It's some good stuff. So yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me? So as I was telling the board already while we were visiting, Elections Office had our annual conference last week mandatory to maintain certification in elections. It's a week long annual event. And before I dive into some of the negatives that came out of that conference, I have to toot our own horn here. First, I did submit a presentation, three slides. That's all I had time for. If we could get those up. So I'm going to deliver some good news and some bad news. So So I'm going to deliver some good news and some bad news. So some very good news. Calitz County, go ahead and go to the next slide. Calitz County continues to excel in the elections area across the state. This is a new award presented by the Secretary of State's office for outstanding security. So this is the good news. This is the first of its kind. And honestly, I think the Secretary of State created it because Calitz County is piloting a program with the Secretary of State's office in preparation for 2024. It's, we nicknamed it a go kit. But in the simplest terms, this is a disaster plan. If we are taken by hackers, if we have any type of malicious event, cyber event with our IT department, this will allow us in elections to continue operations. We will be limping, but it will not stop us. So it's a complete and isolated system that is ready to go. We wouldn't have internet access at all, any access to email, anything like that. We would only have access to the state registration database. We would be able to issue ballots, record ballots that are coming in, and that's it. Minimum capabilities, it would be difficult, but it won't stop us in the water. So Calitz County is ready in 2024.
How would you have access only to that little piece of data out there?
They, we have blacklisted the, the specific laptops so that it has no internet access, period. It has no access to anything other than a Dymo label, simply to be able to print labels for issuing ballots and to the state's database. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything, a printer, anything. So, and that's the only way to protect ourselves is when you basically go offline, no internet connection. The minute you connect.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, but you're not offline. That's what I'm saying.
It is offline. I'm, I don't claim to be an IT guy, but the SOC team for the state came down and met with our IT staff, and we have a specific router. It's, it's an isolated sandboxed standalone system only with direct access to vote wa, and that's it.
Right. Doesn't that model the way that you handle emailed ballots when people overseas want to vote? Because it's completely separated from the other system.
Yeah, good memory. We have an isolated laptop that is used because by law, elections has to receive email ballots, fax ballots from those that are overseas, and there's no way to identify a malicious attachment from a legitimate attachment. So you're right, we do have a standalone laptop that in case it's bad, it's not gonna infect anything else.
So let me repeat, as long as you have a cable hookup to the outside world, you're not absolutely safe.
You know, I don't feel comfortable speaking. What I'm being told is that is not the case. But like I say, I am not an IT professional. I have IT professionals that are assisting us. That, that's what I'm being told. So I wouldn't be comfortable answering that, but would be happy to bring one of them here to speak about it.
I'm just recommending you don't use the word standalone, because it's not standalone. It's isolated. But you do have a link going out. And if you want some real industrious hacker NSA capable type hacker, I recently sent an article to IT about these other routers. They have, they have a program in there. It had been hacked and some 30,000 routers out there were shipped. I bought this new router, plugged it in, did everything right. And your data was going out that way.
Because it came with malicious.
Right.
Yeah, and you buy USBs that also can contain malicious programs on them as soon as you plug them in. But that's why elections takes the extra step. We have, we don't plug anything in that hasn't been gone through the cleaner.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. But when you say things in absolute, when you know it can't be, I think is just something I'd be very cautious of. You cannot speak for what happens at the SOS office.
Yes. So if, if the state is hacked, you're right. We'll all suffer. So we're relying on the Secretary of State to be outstanding.
In any event, congratulations.
Thank you. So next slide, I specifically wanted to talk to the canvassing board. And like I say, if there are typos in this, I really apologize. I had just this morning to throw something together here. So we came back from conference and learned that Senate Bill 5890 kind of turned into something really robust and significant that I wasn't anticipating. It's surrounding signature verification in our vote by mail system. You know, we continue to have questions about the signature verification system, but it, but it also has a direct effect on you. So one of the requirements, first, I'll, I'll just say that it, it adds requirements to the Secretary of State and counties, and I've just touched on a couple. So some of the requirements for the Secretary of State are that he's to adopt statewide standards for signature verification, develop a standard training and also training manual for signature verification, and design a standard signature challenge form. So we didn't have those in the past. Secretary of State would assist in coordinating Washington State Patrol to provide training to us on signature verification standards. But this now, the Secretary of State is required to produce a manual on what's legitimate, what isn't legitimate. And he's working on that and also training, providing training.
So, so Carolyn, what was the problem that they were trying to address? Too many signatures not, not being accepted or?
You know, it's a good question because you have both sides of the aisle. So I, I talked about this briefly in one of our trainings last week, that a lawsuit was filed in King County. It, we know how lawsuits are, how long they take. It's, it's, it was dropped, I want to say, at least a year ago, maybe a year and a half. It hasn't been updated yet. But it's challenging signature verification altogether. The nuts and bolts of it is that if there's no fraud occurring, why verify signatures altogether? So we have that piece going on. We know that people in general don't trust, some people in general don't trust the standard of signature verification. And the legislature assigned the state auditor's office to do a study. They studied the five counties with the most signature rejections and the five counties with the least signature rejections, Calitz County was one of those, and studied, compared all of us to see, why are we challenging signatures? And, you know, af- after that study, they agreed that the, the signature challenges that occurred were legitimate. However, they also added this strange apples to oranges comparison, because we all know that race is not identified in our voter registration system. So how could you say that those voters whose ballots were challenged are of one ethnicity or another? And they use this kind of broad sample of percentages. And well, statewide, you know, we have X amount of Hispanics, et cetera. So they just produced a report that came across that if you're of Hispanic origin, you're more likely to have your signature challenged. And that must imply some sort of bias. Signature verifiers must have some sort of bias while they're verifying signatures, right? The reporting on that kind of, you know, it, it went sideways and it's created more rhetoric around the process. It's a difficult thing to, to say one way or another, because you've, for me, myself, your, you, verification of the signature is the only security that you have in preventing somebody from signing your ballot. The post office worker who, who mails it out and intercepts it first. And I, I don't, I shouldn't have said that because I don't want to imply that they have any nefarious intent. I'm just saying that there's, there's ability, availability there. Somebody taking your ballot out of your mailbox and signing it for you. If there's no signature verification at all, you're gonna go to vote, and you're gonna have a ballot already returned for you, and you're gonna say, wait a minute, that's, I didn't return that ballot. If we're in a vote by mail situation, and we currently are, and up until and if the law changes, we have to have security in place, and signature verification is that security in a vote by mail process.
Yeah, I, I think one thing that's overlooked is you take two signature experts to look at a signature, and they're likely to disagree.
So I, we just went through training last week on this, and I, I am going to put some more information together specifically for the parties, hoping that they will disseminate some information for me. It will be very difficult for my staff to challenge a signature. It's effective now for this primary, and it will be very difficult for us to challenge a signature in any case.
I think some of the evil here is it's hard to, there's some obvious signatures and some non-obvious. That cannot be changed. People are gonna use their judgment. But what can change is what you do with a bounced signature. And you do tremendous effort to verify the signature. You contact the people and so forth. That's where the magic is, and that's why your numbers are so low here. But that step is really important. Is that acknowledged at all in this?
So interestingly enough, you know, because you've seen our process in Calitz County, we did have one of the lowest rejection rates because we take the extra time, we make those contacts, we, your party members, I've heard them say it at, at the meetings, we, if we see a signature that, okay, we're gonna accept it. But boy, their, their signature's changed. We need an updated signature. We're gonna mail you a form. People get upset about it. We take, we take a lot of heat, but we want to keep updated signatures on file specifically for that process. And it's those contacts, and we do thousands of those every year. But it's that contact that keeps our rejection rates low. The state auditor's office, because we were one of the counties that were under this review, got a hold of that, and they made it a best practice. And now it's implemented into this Senate bill. Let me tell you how happy King County and some of those other counties are, because it's an astronomical amount of work. Yeah, it's, this is an additional full-time position during elections, every election, because this isn't just us doing that regular maintenance work. We're gonna have one person calling every single day during the election to make contact with any voter that has a challenged signature, calling, emailing, and texting if they've provided the information.
So I think it's one of the interesting trends that I've noticed, and I've only canvassed a couple of times, but there, it appears to me that we have an increasing number of young voters who don't do cursory.
They really haven't developed a signature.
And it's, they scribble or something, and it's, it's, it's really strange. And they probably don't really realize without a signature, it's, it's hard to verify.
You're absolutely right. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. I wasn't really gonna focus on all the challenges, the additional work that's coming to counties, because there is a direct effect on the canvassing board members. So this bill requires that everybody serving on canvassing board attend signature verification training from the Secretary of State, and we also publish your name and those training dates on our website in this bill. So moving forward, I know Rick, as Chair of the Board, you are officially serving, but you've designated to Dennis this year. So I guess you guys can amongst yourself decide who wants to attend training, and I will make sure to get some dates to you. But in their infinite wisdom, and they did not consult us on the wording of this bill, one of the new requirements is that we have to develop this community outreach plan on signature verification. The best part is it must be in English and Spanish. Because we all know how wording is everything, just the way they worded the bill. Even though we're a county that isn't required to produce materials in alternative languages, when it comes to signature verification, we now have to hire a translator and translate all of our materials in Spanish as well as English. Effective the primary.
So I know it makes it sound like you have to start from scratch, but we've got two institutions that are already used to utilizing translators. One, of course, is district court for sure. Because they're, they're constantly, and if you talk to Molly, she'll, she'll, she'll tell you that whenever we have a fishing season for smelt, for some reason, there are minority groups that just fled to the lake, the, the riversides. And if they get tickets by collecting too many, catching too many, that goes to district court. So they're very used to translations.
Good to know.
But we also have an organization called the Ethnic Support Council that, I mean, that's their whole focus is helping people who speak English as a second language to better integrate into the community. So reach out to both of those for, who they rely on for translations, and it's probably already, you have a network there, I think.
We appreciate that. We were first going to rely on some of our larger counties like King County that, that are currently translating. We don't want to have the robust plan that King County probably has, so it won't be exact, but we would have a, a starting point at least.
But that community outreach is based on the community. So it's helpful to have somebody already in place in the community who knows how they've, they've already been doing the job.
I'll tell you, it's a little bit of a scary endeavor. I've heard horror stories. When you don't speak the language and you're trusting an outsider to interpret and translate your materials, and if they get their different interpretations of word meanings, and I've heard that they've gone horribly wrong in the past, not, not gonna lie, it's causing me a little bit of heartburn. Might rely on some of my Spanish-speaking friends to review it and see if I've got anything.
Yeah. So I am, I'm sure that the state is making resources available for the counties to hire the staff to do this.
This is, this is a billable charge. Unfortunately, this is how it works. It just rolls downhill. So everything required in here now becomes an election's charge, and every jurisdiction participating in the election just yeah, pays a price.
You'll hire what, who you need to hire, and I get the job.
Yep. Just an additional cost with everything else. So it's a lot. Signature verification.
You know, Carolyn, retired speakers of Spanish probably be right in there, be glad to help you out, starting January.
I think one of them might be on a boat somewhere. I've heard for months and months, and we'll be unable to track them down.
I was wondering where we were gonna go there.
So like I say, I just had a couple of things this morning that this, the new signature verification requirements on how we verify the signature itself, I want to get, because it's really robust. When it, it, it didn't use to be in the past, I want to get that training out to the party soon. This is just a highlight of some of the additional requirements on Secretary of State and the counties as a result of this. Any other questions for me? I'll update you. Our military ballots went out last week. We're in it. Primary has started, so. Ballots, official ballots, I think, go out July 19th. I don't have a calendar off the top of my head, but. And again, I would like to remind everybody, the local voters pamphlet will not, not include state candidates. So state candidates can be found on our website, Secretary of State's website. We will not print them in the printed local voter, local voters pamphlet. That was a very difficult decision for us.
Well, when you have as many people filing for office, and how many, how many filed for governor? I mean, there's this.
There were thirty two withdrew. So in one race, we have twenty eight candidates, which you can only get two candidates to a page. And in 2022, Calhoun County attempted to uh, print state candidates and it ended up being over seventy pages. We'd be looking at, at least ninety pages in this pamphlet. And we had two days in 2022 to put it together. It's, it's impossible for a county our size with our resources. And we.
Talking just the primary?
Just the primary. Yeah. General election, you will have, we are just, yeah, we are winnowing the candidates down in the primary. So general election, we print jointly. People think that that's produced by our office alone and it's not. We combine with the state, the state prints their candidates. We print our candidates and we combine the two pamphlets into one mailing. So there's the difference. This, the state does not print their own pamphlet in the primary.
Yeah, makes sense.
Wish that was included in this bill.
Just a comment that we can't do anything about, but uh, when I, I was at the beginning of the computer age, if you will. And uh, when uh, programs are developed, uh, they're, they're always documentation standards. You put in your code, I'm doing this or this. And uh, some people objected to the standards because uh, you want to be stylistic and individual yourself on that. And, and the problem with that is kind of obvious. Your, your, your program, if it's any good, will survive you and go on to somebody else. And uh, even now, when we look at a Microsoft program, there's an item in the upper left always called file, right? Sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't make sense, but nevertheless, the standardization prevails. So here we are, when we know that we are largely an English speaking nation. And uh, if you do not speak English, how can you keep track of almost everything that happens along? And then if you put something in Spanish, let's say, why not put it in Ruski and Italian and Mong, or Hmong? And you're just opening up a can of worms. Divisiveness is not a good thing. And having to translate items, I mean, the purpose of a language is to communicate. And the world, for one reason or another, has adopted English. I've been in places where the only uh, communication between the Japanese and the Italian has been in the most god awful English. But at least communication occurred. Anyhow, that's my, my spiel.
Bring up a really good point that I think this is only a matter of time before this bill is challenged. You can't single out English and Spanish. You are so right. Those other languages will say, well, what about us?
Yeah.
If we're not following the national rules for language, uh, then I don't know how we can discriminate by saying, oh, we're just going to print English and Spanish.
And particularly if I can help the translation a little bit, right?
That's what I fear.
I can't wait till you have to translate out for the Southern draw.
Well, those signature challenge forms, if, if you've ever had your challenge, your signature challenged on your ballot, those forms are going to come now in English and Spanish. So, and I, I just know they already make people angry. So now when it comes in multiple languages and is difficult to read because of all the required verbiage that we need to put in there, it's going to make them angrier.
Just in case people misunderstood, that other people listening that's understood what I say. I have absolutely zero objection to going to a restaurant that speaks only Spanish or speaks only Chinese. I'll point to the pictures. Doesn't bother me in the least bit. But an official legal document, it's just a burden we should never take on.
Because where does it end?
It never does. Yeah.
Does have any other questions for me?
No. Thanks for the update. I think.
One, one last comment on that. We, we apparently have a, English speakers have a hard time understanding phrases like shall not be impaired. Can you imagine translating those phrases into a foreign language and uh, all the nuance? Well, depends who translated it, right?
Yeah. You, you've heard stories of car manufacturers have a name for a car and it doesn't translate well into another country. Yeah. So when, you're right. When you translate stuff, you could have unintended things happen.
There have been events across the state with those counties that do have to translate. So the fear is legitimate.
I like the Nova example. Nova does not go, does not run.
That's great.
I have a Chevy does not run.
Why is this not selling down there? Okay, I see the coroner's office.
In how many languages you have to do a certificate?
Good morning.
Morning.
So we just kind of have a, a basic update on um, just some numbers for you today.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Sorry. We just kind of have some numbers for you guys today, just to show you kind of where we're at. Um, and then uh, we had our annual um, conference um, in May. So uh, we, we discussed some, some things that we've, we've um, taken to legislation and stuff. And so we thought we would just share with you on that. Our pathology study that we've been doing um, is still um, on its way. And hopefully, hopefully that will um, get some pathologists and stuff um, into Washington state. They're still working on that.
Can you explain that? That was a, a search for pathologist or?
Yeah. So, so um, they have a pathology study going, um, which is um, a, a group of some of the pathologists within Washington state that has kind of taken over that study and trying to put together some, some thoughts of how to bring more pathologists into Washington state.
Okay, it's not studying pathology. It's.
No, no, no. Um, it's, it's kind of trying to, trying to uh, brainstorm on how to bring pathologists into Washington state so that we can overcome the, the shortage of pathologists. So they're still working on that. Um, and uh, that will go to legislation to try and, trying to help beat that shortage. Um, so they're still working on that. Um, but they have some pretty good ideas and stuff. So um, the indigent bill, uh, so.
Can you name a, a thing that they might be thinking about doing for a pathologist?
So they, they have some, I can't remember all of them. One, one is um, some schools putting together some um, options for different schools. Like bringing them uh, into W, um, the university of Washington, a couple of the different um, bigger universities and stuff, giving them uh, different options and maybe um, like the, has to do with uh, some incentives with the tuition for studying for pathologists. Yeah, some of those things. I can't remember what all of them were, but um, and then housing and then um, some options on payback and stuff like that, I guess. So. Um, and then uh, one of the other um, ones that was um, in legislation was the indigent bill. So currently we have to hold indigents for uh, ninety days before we can do anything with them. And that went, we, we opted from ninety days to thirty days. Excuse me. And so that went into legislation and uh, they went from ninety days and they met us in the middle, kind of in the middle for forty five days. So we don't have to hold the indigents. Um, now an indigent is uh, a true indigent is one that does not have any family, not an unclaimed that is abandoned by family. But a true indigent is one that does not have family. So from ninety days to forty five days. So we technically only have to hold them forty five days before we can take, take care of them and um, take care of disposition for them. So we don't have to hold them in, in our office for ninety days before we have, before we can take care of them. So um, that was very nice.
How it impacts your office?
In the morgue. So if we, if we bring somebody in that does not have any family.
I think I understand that. I'm saying, so the law changes. We used to hold them for, for ninety days.
For ninety days.
Ninety days isn't free, but on the other hand, you've got a lot of space. So whether it's ninety or forty five days, my guess is doesn't mean a whole bunch to you in terms of the budget or the staff you need. And that's the kind of question I'm asking.
Well, it does for the person.
Now, I'm talking about from our operations. I, I know those days, I mean, I cannot speak for the public, but.
Yeah. So for, it's not just for us, but for general. So, so when, it doesn't matter if it's a um, uh, somebody that's staffed with a lot of people or a very big um, county building or a medical examiner office that has a lot of room. You have offices that are very small. So those offices still have to do it, right? So they, they're required to hold them for, for ninety days also. So.
Right. I think I understand that.
Yeah.
We should not expect from you to come to us and say, we can cut our budget or we need to increase our budget based on this change.
No, but for, for everybody across the board, it's, it's nice that we don't have to hold an indigent for ninety days. We can take care of them within forty five days. Yeah. So.
There's some offices that don't have.
Yeah.
The space and the luxury we have.
Exactly. And then also for, for a person in general, it's, it's nice to be able to take care of them sooner than later because the longer somebody sits there, the more deteriorating they get. So it's.
So a question that I have is um, how long do, do you have to? How long does it take for you to determine that you truly do have an, an indigent?
It doesn't, it does not take us very long. I mean, as soon as we get back to the office, we're working on that. So really within, probably within a couple of days, we're going to know whether or not we're going to be able to find family.
And how long is, what, what's the typical length of time for, for taking care of a deceased? Once, once they cross your threshold.
For a non-indigent.
For not, yeah, for non-indigent.
Oh, um, so as soon as we, as soon as we locate family, then it's, we give them, you know, we, we just tell them as soon as they find a funeral home, then they're ready to be released as, you know, as soon as we find family. So within a few days, you know, typically um, hopefully the family has a funeral home and then we can um, get them on their way of where they need to go.
So typically not much, it, it rarely extends beyond what fifteen days?
Yeah.
Assuming that family comes, comes in and takes care of business.
Yeah, but um, with, with our databases and stuff, um, we're, we usually know if we're going to be able to find family within a couple of days. So if, if we haven't found them within a couple of days, we're not going to find them. Unless, unless they're not in the system and they haven't had anything to do with them for, for years and there's no, there's no way to connect them. They're not in the system anywhere and they come out of the woodwork, you know, way down the road. So, yeah. So it's, it's nice for everybody, including the decedent, to be able to be taken care of in a timely manner instead of, you know, being in the cooler and um.
It sounds like forty five days is still a little bit long then.
It, yes, it is, but it's, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a lot nicer for us to not have to keep them the ninety. So it's, it's um, we're happy with that. We would have rather done the thirty. That's what we asked for. But it was a compromise and it's, it's still less than ninety. So we were happy that we at least got that one. So, yeah. So that was nice. And then the pathologist study is on, on its way. So hopefully we can um, get something going with that one. And then um, there was another one, but it's um, I've, I forgot what that one was. But then looking at, we pulled stats early this morning, so I'm sorry about that. But currently it looks like um, our overdoses that have been determined um, are at twenty five with ten pending, which most likely those ones will be overdoses. Um, and then we have a couple of undetermines, um, which were most likely overdoses also. So that would put us at um, about thirty seven currently. And we still stand with the majority of those fentanyl. I didn't have time to break all of those down. But next time we come in, I'll have, I'll have um, a better.
Could you send us that in an email?
Yeah, I could do that. Yeah, yeah. Um, and then uh, I, um, Christie sent um, a text to Grace to see what we were at um, this time last year. We were at um, and, and I'll confirm when we get back to the office, because I didn't, didn't think about that when we uh, got over here. But um, it looked like we were about eighteen at this time last year. But I'll confirm when we get back. And about forty one all year last year.
Well, possibly doubled.
Yeah. Yeah, um, this week's been pretty crazy. Um, I can't say, I mean, it's, it's been pretty crazy lately. Um, and then seems like we've been, we've been getting um, but we had three, three deaths yesterday. I can't say that all of those were overdoses or anything, but we've been getting more and more on a daily basis. And I'm not saying they were all overdoses or anything, but it's, it's been picking up. So.
So we had a workshop, a, a report from uh, our epidemiologist at the last health, board of health meeting. And uh, her, her estimate, looking at the numbers of overdose deaths indicated that the, the, the most vulnerable, vulnerable section of the community are white males between twenty four and forty four. Does that kind of fit the profile of the cases that you're seeing?
I haven't broken it down that way. Um, but what we had seen was probably not that low. It's probably up a little bit higher, it seemed like of what, but probably what, yeah, a little bit older. But what we're seeing is, is of course just the deaths. What they're seeing is overall everything. So we don't see the ones that of course go into the hospital with overdoses or the EMS, you know, that come out of it and all of that stuff. We're just seeing the ones that don't come out of it, of course. So um, there's, there's all kinds of different, different stats and our stats are just coming off the deaths that, you know, that come through our office. And a lot of ours are probably the middle age on up. And then, you know, um, a few months ago, we got the um, a trend of four deaths within like two days of, what was it, twenty five to thirty three? It, it was, it was kind of a weird, a weird streak of fentanyl overdoses of just those ages of four in just like two days. So.
Obviously a dosage that went wrong. I guess if there's a right dosage and, you know, uh.
Yeah. I don't know. It's the potency. It's the potency, the, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how you, how you say it. I mean, no, no drug is a good drug. So if you call it a good batch, a bad batch, none of them are, none of them are good, so. More pure.
Yeah.
I don't know, so.
I think at the first of the year, or right before the first year, we made, we did some personnel changes over there, right? I think we added, so we have somebody in the office all the time?
Yes.
Am I, am I remembering right? And then weren't we looking for a pathologist? Because we're having to pull, we were wanting to make sure people could get with families instead of pulling them or, I thought we added something else too? Or just office help?
No, it was just office help.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a receptionist.
If we had people in the office, somebody all the time in the office and then others could get out and meet with.
Yeah, so we, we added Grace over there as a receptionist so that everybody else, because of the phone calls that come in, so we had somebody basically designated to the phones so that the, the deputies could do their casework and meet with families and all of that stuff and not be on the phone constantly. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's working, huh?
Yes, it's, it's been wonderful. So, yeah. The other, the other thing is that we, that we got here is vehicle accidents are up. We have had ten so far this year, which is quite a bit. We've had three drownings so far and thirteen suicides. So I didn't, I didn't put how many suicides from last year currently, you know, or anything like that. But I do know that the vehicle accidents are, that's quite a bit from, from where we usually are.
Our, our numbers when we have, we, because we've had a couple, at least two or three were trying to elude officers and end in an accident, are those?
And those were like back to back too.
Those end up in those stats or they're, okay.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we've had, we've had quite a few of those that were back to back. And, and then we also had, within those two, we also had another freeway accident that was, they were all light clumped together. So, yeah, we were pretty busy.
I went down through, down to battleground to my daughters yesterday in that woodland. I, I'm surprised they don't have more there because you're going along and then all of a sudden you start seeing taillights and then, and, yeah.
Any other questions? Or anything that you would like us to look at and bring back for you or?
Just disheartening to, to see the, what looks like continued growth in, in drug deaths and stuff.
Yeah.
Are you still getting out in schools? You trying to a little bit?
Trying to, we haven't, we haven't recently, we did early on. We did the, we did the, we had a booth, the children's museum.
Did you do that?
Yeah. We did the children's museum and then we also did the Kelso.
Gifted children, so it was elementary, middle school and wonderful, wonderful, smart kids.
Yeah.
Do, do they still have the every fifteen minutes program in the high schools?
I was, we had the WACME conference and they had someone talking about it. I don't know if they still do that in our area, but they were explaining that and we had a few people talk about what an impact that made on them as high schoolers and, and the choices that they made afterwards. And so.
So it's based on the idea that a teenager dies from a car accident every fifteen minutes. And so they go through a high school and they, they pre-select kids and then on the day, they dress differently usually in choir gowns or, you know, some, some kind of a gown and.
Absolutely silent.
And, and then, then they disappear and they go away with the rest of the day. And the, the survivors are very much aware that all of a sudden numbers are down. It's kind of, I, I thought it was pretty impactful.
I know they used to do it. I haven't heard about it for a while, but I'd like to check into that and see, so.
I thought it was a collaborative effort between the sheriff's, law enforcement and the coroner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that they did a while back, but I haven't heard about it for a while.
If, if you know, and I don't know that you would have this stuff, but if you know in talking to other counties, are they seeing the same type of trend? I'm going back to the drug overdoses again.
Yes.
So it's not, we're not singling out Calhoun County.
No.
Looking abnormal from anybody else. It's more of a sad state all across our, our state. And you think Oregon too?
Yeah. I, we don't, we don't have too much interaction with Oregon. But I do know in talking with everybody else within Washington, it is, it is a trend with, with everybody. It's just, you know, we, we kind of know in the bigger cities, you're going to see more. It just seems to hit home more when it's in the smaller ones. And it seems to be more impactful when it, when it's in the smaller ones.
In the big Hughes counties, people tend to get lost and not so much paid attention to.
Which, which is, you know, which is really sad. But when it, when it's, when it hits the smaller communities and stuff, it's like people start to actually wake up and see that, hey, it's really here.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
As you continue to work on those statistical numbers, I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to perhaps forward a quarterly update on your comparisons and your statistics for the board of health? Because, you know, we're, we've had that report on the overdoses and I think that would be just helpful information to, to just be aware of how the trends are going.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Perfect. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Couple miscellaneous, I saw a note from Commissioner Mortensen today on the chaplaincy. I can give you a little bit of background on that because I talked to, to Mike Moss and Savannah and they were going to communicate it to us, but somebody's reached out. You remember they looked at that, that place and they said they had some issues with it and they would want it to be inspected and not have, didn't think it was, would not pay the, what they were asking for with the issues they, they saw. They did another tour, they took, and I don't know who from the chaplaincy they took over, but showed them the issues that they were seeing that were kind of underneath the, you get past the cosmetic improvements, you could see where that was. And they had sheriff over there to look at the storage. And both of those entities thought there was, there was more than they wanted to deal with there. So, and I think Mike and Savannah may talk about this at some point in time. At one point, I think you all approved a storage facility for the sheriff and they still have those, those funds. So we may look at, of course, with our approval, if a storage facility with maybe a living quarters in there for the chaplaincy. So I think that's the route you're going to kind of hear from, from them.
Redesigning it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing I had on my, my list is we need to assign new board of health people. I've only seen three applicants to, to fill the positions. And I think that has to be done because we have a board of health meeting tomorrow and those people are all begun, so.
This is your last, this is your last one?
Yeah. So I, I basically, I, I, I don't know. I'm assuming you guys have seen the three. I just, I turned, I said, this is the three we got, so, so.
Of course, they have to fit certain categories. So I don't know if that's not, that's not on the form, but are you keeping track of?
Kelly kind of broke that down for us so you could see where they were, would fit, so, just so you're aware.
So would these, the board of health meeting is tomorrow?
Is tomorrow.
That would be with the new people or?
No, I think that'd be the last meeting with the existing, but we might, if you're good with those.
I'm good with those.
Who's applied and I think in that meeting, we should announce that the, the new city members will be A, B and C.
Okay.
Well, next Tuesday, not tomorrow?
Yeah, that's, that's more like it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been having a lot of trouble.
I made, I made a lot of people nervous. Okay.
And I have a miscellaneous.
Go ahead.
It's basically for you. I, the Veterans Advisory Board meets. And that's this Thursday, I believe. And I'm being a little.
They told me tomorrow.
Oh, is it tomorrow?
But we have one thirty and two thirty.
It is tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, their, their meeting starts at three o'clock. I figured we might be done by then, but I, I want to go to this renewable hydrogen program. And it's just that I, when, yeah. Anyhow, and I generally sit into the Veterans Advisory Board, but I think there are issues there that you might be interested in just seeing.
And, and if, if the time works out tomorrow, I'm, I'll, I'll sit in on.
Okay, and the advisory, and it meets at HHS in that conference room.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, when Carolyn wants to, Carolyn, I think my idea is both of us should probably take the training because Dennis is kind of watching over that this, this year, but he'll be gone next year, so.
I will get the dates to Kelly to, it, it's a good probably hour and a half.
Okay.
So we'll get the dates to Kelly.
So.
Oh, hour and a half, okay, that's not that.
Yeah. I, I want to make sure we're, we're not, we're not a cog in, a bad cog in the wheel to you getting that, that done, so.
I, I thought, I thought you were talking about extensive like multi-day. Okay.
Just a lot of details.
Okay.
Hour and a half of that level of detail.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay, we got about five minutes. Why don't we take a short, short recess and then we'll fire up here in about five minutes. Hey, back from recess, head into agenda item review. First one I see is Event Center, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Boka with the Calhoun County Event Center. I've got three things on the consent agenda for tomorrow. And I don't know which order they're in, but I'll just start with my tourism grant to the city of Castle Rock. It's in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This is, again, to remind you, the LTAC board voted to give each of the cities thirty thousand dollars. And so this is, is one of those grants to them.
Is, is this an annual grant or is it a one-time only for just this year?
This is a one-time only for this year.
Because we do the, the visitor center, that's a different allocation.
Correct. So just to refresh a little bit, because I don't believe Commissioner Weber, that you were at the meeting when we talked about this. There was some excess funds. And so the LTAC decided that rather than having those funds just in our account, that they would. that they would, um, take, they would divide a hundred and fifty thousand between the five cities in the county so that they could then expend these monies for their own tourism use. So they will get this, this funding, and then at the end of the year, they'll have to report back to us how this money was spent.
Yes, um, Mr. Vorse will be back next year asking for it, continuing the program. Although I think he's retiring.
Right, I think he's, he'll be retired.
Um, any questions on that before I move to my event center items?
The other cities will come along later.
Yes, we've already processed, uh, Kalama. And I believe I sent a contract to Woodland, but I'm not positive that that's come back, so more to come. Castle Rock was the most, um, excited to get this. They have the least amount of lodging tax coming into their community, so this really does mean a lot to them, so they were, um, the first to get their contract back. Um, my next two items are grants. Um, we received two grants from Washington Department of Agriculture. These are health and safety grants for fairs. Um, it's part of the fair funding. Uh, the first one is agreement number K five four, five zero four six. And this one is items, um, that we need to purchase for our fair. We're looking at some new bleachers, some new picnic tables that are ADA accessible, a plotter printer, um, to print our own signs to have better signage on our grounds. Uh, this grant's an amount of fifty eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. And it is a reimbursable grant, so we must expend the funds and submit for reimbursement. We have until May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five to expend the funds for this one. Is there any questions on that? Um, and just a side note, we did, we applied for two grants this year. Uh, because of the master plan that was happening at the event center, we didn't want to apply for anything that would impact structures. So we tried to apply for funds for things that, um, if buildings were torn down, relocated, that we would still be able to use these items. Um, so the second grant, um, is to replace pig pens that are, um, dilapidated. Um, a lot of the, um, I had mentioned this before, some of the items, um, that we're tearing out can actually be used in our sheep barn. Um, so we're, we're going to reuse what we can, but we will be purchasing new pig pins. With the second grant, and the second grant is in the amount of forty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. Any questions on those? Okay.
Glad to see the work done for the pigs.
Try to keep those pigs corralled.
My, my neighbor, I live on Crooked Creek Road and he, uh, Crooked Creek swines.
The Williamson's?
Yeah, Glenn and Leslie, my neighbor, so I'm used to seeing their.
They need to work on their trailer.
Yeah, because the one little one got out and they've been.
On I five.
There was one on my driveway one day and, uh, and it just come up and butted my, my Jeep, and I told Glenn, I said, that was almost pork.
We've raised pigs, and when you're, when you're working with three hundred pounds of solid muscle, they're and they have their own mind, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a challenge. Thank you.
Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. The one item we have on the agenda tomorrow is an interlocal agreement with the Port of Longview. It's an update to their current agreement. Uh, we have agreements with the other ports and the cities to do work between the cities and the, and the county and the ports in the county. Um, our old contract with the Port of Longview is only for three thousand dollars, which doesn't get a lot of work done. So we're updating it to thirty thousand dollars, which is still quite low. Most of our agreements with the cities are in the hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollar range. The main reason this is brought up because the Port of Longview is looking to help us chip seal one of their roads this summer, and it was past the three thousand dollar mark, but below the thirty thousand, so we're just updating it to thirty thousand for this point. There's no ending dates to these contracts, so it may be good for thirty thousand for the next five years, but I would guess down the road, if there's a major project between us and the port, either way, that we'll have to come back for a bigger update or another update.
So the, um, rail, railroad tracks by Tenet Way is not part of this deal at all?
Not at all, no.
And that's still on, on, on track, as we would say?
Yes, uh, an update there with visiting, visiting with the port about Tenet Way. Sounds like they still are doing some work behind the scenes and some of their reporting back to the federal government, and they're a few months behind on that of getting the projects, what they need, some programs in place for their federal dollars. So it looks like it may be, you know, fourth quarter of this year. Still working forward to an agreement with them that we bring towards, to you guys, and probably in the next, I'm hoping in the next month or so. Yeah, that's it.
I know it's, it's not, uh, part of the agenda tomorrow, but, uh, you may have gotten some emails from us on the chaplaincy building.
Would you guys only want an update now or? You want to do it after HHS? It's up to you.
I, I think you can do it pretty quick.
Okay, I can. Actually, I brought a picture tablet or folder for each of you. I did not, sorry. I can, I can forward, I can, I can forward these pictures over to you, Kelly. Thank you. So we had a chance to visit the, the property there on Seventh Avenue a second time, uh, with two members of the chaplaincy board and also the sheriff's office to look at that location since it was questioned, um, the use of the outdoor storage area for the sheriff's office. Uh, unfortunately, when we visited with all three members, they all three decided it was probably not the best location for them. The, it was going to be really tough for uh, getting secure storage for the sheriff's office and pretty much tearing a building down and starting over. And if we're going to do that, we might as well go to another, another building somewhere else. And the two board members from the chaplaincy, it was the first time walking through that building. So when they walked through it, they decided, hey, we, we probably, it might be a better location than this. So after that meeting that day, the, the two members of the chaplaincy said they were going to report back. So I apologize, you guys got those emails. Apparently they did not report back. And so we could have our, the county's real estate agent contact the owners of that property directly today to make sure they're aware that we're not not interested in the property unless you guys see reasons otherwise. So this is a few pictures of some of the buildings, some of the interior stuff. The interior stuff, we, we could easily fix, but it was mainly the outside that was looking for the sheriff's office that was deemed, you know, not useful. Uh, the, the, that building is, the larger building, uh, needs to do rough uh, doors, siding, uh, all the wiring has been pulled out. And it's just really challenging. I think the, the sheriff's office wants to be able to put their boats there, and there's really not a good pull-through access backing off of Seventh Avenue is just challenging. So for us, as an option was not to say no, but to come back with different plans, and that is, I think, Commissioner Dahl brought this up earlier. Uh, a few years back, we had some money earmarked for a storage building for the sheriff's office, but it kind of fell to the side. I think that they started having some permitting issues of stormwater where it was supposed to be located at. I'd like to find another site for that, um, and come back to you guys with some numbers to, to build a, I think they're looking like a forty by one hundred uh, so many bay shop metal building secured and, and maybe bu- box in one of those bays for, uh, uh, to be able to lease out or rent out, possibly to the chaplaincy. Uh, that's pretty much an open space that has a kitchenette and a meeting space and maybe a bedroom and a bathroom in the back. Because it sounds like that's the need. If they have an out-of-town chaplain's, chaplain, and they may need to stay at one or two nights in the local area. So, I mean, uh, that might be a, a better option than the property. Uh, it is a better option than going across the street on Seventh Avenue. Um, so if you guys are okay with that, I'd love to bring you guys back some numbers and we can budget, now look at budget time in the fall here and see if it works into either the maintenance budget, general fund, CIP, we'll see exactly where this falls at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are these of the facility on Seventh?
Yes, it is. Yes, they are.
Wow.
Yeah, worse than we thought, huh?
Uh, it, it's, yeah, it's quite challenging. And if you buy it for X number of dollars, you're going to have to spend another X number of dollars on it.
Correct, yeah, we figured we'd be at least a million dollars into this property to, and even then it'd be a challenging time, like I said, to get, it's really a pie-shaped piece of property, a wedge and, and with a driveway in the middle of it, so for us to be able to get access for boats and stuff in there is going to be really hard.
And an elevation issue too.
Yes, correct, exactly right. It is actually right. Yep, yeah.
Yeah. So. We're glad you guys took a deeper look at it.
Well, I appreciate that, yes. Like I said, it's, since they were not informed, it sounds like we'll make sure our real estate agent reaches out to the owners of that property today and inform them that we're not interested.
Yeah, but I think we all, it sounds like we're all kind of in agreement. If we can make that, that, that storage unit and have a, a availability to lease to the chaplaincy, I think that'd be a, a good alternative.
Yeah, yeah, it might be, I, I would guess for a lot less. Now, quite hundreds of thousands of dollars may be less than what we'd be spending across the street, or I say across the street because I'm so used to being at the fairground, sorry, Kim, on the Seventh Avenue property.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
So, uh, it just, you probably talked about it. I was just leafing through that and I, uh, the location of a potential new facility?
Yeah, initially, we're looking at, of course, behind the Public Works facility. I think we talked about that a few years back in a back parking lot at Public Works. It just didn't work out that location, but I think the new spots we're looking at, they'd like to be closer to the jail and juvie on that, um, the park, the, the road between jail, juvie, and the event center. Uh, talked to Kim, maybe there's a corner there we could use across from the morgue, or maybe a piece between jail and juvie to, to put the shop up. They'd like to be close to their home base.
So you've got options.
We do have options, yeah, for sure. We talked about Riverside also.
New construction, though. Totally new building, where the trees are all cut down.
That would be, that's the first corner that we'd like to look at, so exactly spot, yeah. Easy access out, um, and get right back on the freeway. They, they want to be somewhere in the middle of the county, of course, because of the boats, um, to be able to get to South County, the lakes, the rivers, so.
Yeah, you're looking at at least half a million if.
Yeah, that's, that's the number we're looking at, yeah. And we thought we may be about a million by the time we're done at this property there.
Yeah.
So. But we have a brand-new facility and secure for half the price, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll get you some numbers for the budget time. Thank you.
Tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, can we, I think we talked a little bit. Um, I was going to ask Mike to talk a little bit about OPD. We might be doing in, in executive session.
Yes, I had that on, like, one thirty, yeah, I'm going to work with Ca- Kelly and get that on the calendar for you. Yes, yeah. And Kelly, do we have a, a executive session today scheduled at eleven? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right. HHS. HHS stands for Heavenly Haven. Uh?
Sure. Um, good morning, Gina James, Health and Human Services. We have three items on the agenda for tomorrow. Um, the first item is a contract amendment with LifeWorks. This is in relation to our developmental disabilities contract, uh, for employment and day services. Um, if you recall, there's, um, was a change in legislation recently that allowed individuals to be in both employment and the day service simultaneously. Historically, individuals would choose one or the other. Um, and so we, we have seen an increase in clients choosing to be in both services and selecting LifeWorks as their provider. So we are allocating some additional funds just to finish out the current fiscal year of services due to that increase in clients being served. Um, and then we will, we anticipate a new state contract coming, so we'll have, um, that coming to the board in the next month or two as well, but this is just to finish out, um. We had funds that, you know, we don't allocate a hundred percent of the contract out when we get the state contract, so we had some additional funds that we can, um, utilize for these circumstances. So this is just to finish out this fiscal year and then um, we'll be coming back with next year's allocations as well, so.
So, so the state kind of opened up the program a little bit.
They did, mm-hmm, yep, yep. Any questions on that one? The next two items on the agenda are related, so we have our, an amendment with the State Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant. This is for, uh, the pass-through with CAP for Meals on Wheels. So the first item on the agenda is the state amendment. Um, and then the second item is the pass-through with CAP. Um, so the funding for next fiscal year is what's being, um, added to this amendment. Um, the funding for next fiscal year, um, is sixty-six thousand, uh, and then we're passing down sixty-two thousand, five hundred to CAP. The, there's thirty-five hundred that we're allowed to keep for our administrative costs um, for the grant. Uh, so this is just next year's fiscal year allocation, uh, for that particular program. And I will have, um, Tammy from CAP who, uh, manages the program will be here tomorrow if there's specific questions that come up tomorrow. Okay, that's all I have.
Sounds good.
Okay. I see on here, uh, this resolution, so I was just seeing if you guys have any concerns with it. When we changed the hours here, we did it for a year and to take a look at it again. And that's what this is. If we've been happy with the way it's worked over the year, the resolution is for permanent till we change it, so it's not a trial period anymore.
How do we evaluate that?
I, yeah, I was thinking about that, Arne. I just trying to hear if I've, if I've noticed any complaints or, or anything from the public, and I have and I don't want to pick on HHS. The only thing I've heard is from the a couple of comments from the field directors trying to schedule Friday things, and I, and I know you were trying to maybe work out some details so, so they could handle that, but to be honest with you, that's really the only comments I've heard.
And we did work on addressing that Friday issue, so we do have a staff member that is checking for records on Fridays to be able to approve them through the system.
So they'd be able to.
Yeah, so there's been one or two every Friday, but we've made sure that they're approved.
They're taken care of, okay.
Great, thank you.
So if that's, that's the only thing I've heard, unless you guys have heard other issues, I haven't.
I've gotten zero emails to that. I was talking to some constituent and, uh, I think they were inclined to complain about anything, so I wasn't sure what to make out of out of that, um.
There, I, I think I've had maybe two complaints about being closed on Friday from do-it-yourselfer folks who wanted to come down and get a permit on Friday, and that's, we've not been having that for years, and it's, uh,
Yeah.
you know, other, other than that, no, no other complaint, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so unless we hear something strange from the public, I think.
Especially when we have the kind of flexibility where, where there is kind of a little bit of a glitch and you're able to, to work it out, I appreciate that.
Okay. Takes care of the agenda from what I see. I know, um, Doug wants to have an executive session and he says he's available early. We don't have to wait till eleven if everybody. We don't have to wait till eleven if everybody. Can we do just, yeah, okay. I just assumed you were part of the.
Nope. Uh, good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I just had one request this morning from Health and Human Services. They're requesting to fill their local emergency response coordinator. The employee resigned, and I believe she's no longer here at this point in time.
Now, that's something that's funded through emergency management, but it works in the health department, right? Is that? Oh, consolidated contract, okay.
When was the last time we had this local emergency, just the COVID? Uh, it, I, I don't understand enough of the, of the position because, uh, we put a lot of effort into the emergency preparedness, but you don't coordinate things until you actually, I mean, you've got your plan, but then the emergency happens and you, you think your plan is applicable. Sometimes it is. And so I'm just wondering, can, does this person have other duties or how do you use them?
Yes, there, it is, I mean, it is a lot of planning similar to Department of Emergency Management. This, the local emergency response coordinator, this position has a public health focus in that emergency management planning. So she, um, the person in the position has always worked really closely with the Department of Emergency Management and participating in state and region planning, emergency planning, um, committees. There's different, um, regional groups and efforts around planning for those. COVID, yes, was the most recent, um, emergency, um, that this person really was able to, um, pick up and implement some of those planning activities with the Department of Emergency Management and IMT and that sort of thing.
Have we seen this person who's leaving in action?
Have we seen them in action?
Yeah.
Um, like I said, COVID was the most recent, um, event where we were able to practice some of those activities.
Who was that?
We, her name was Catherine Rosthorn.
The, kind of following on the same lines, um, this is a full-time employee, part-time employee?
It's a full-time.
Full-time? She's, she's working with Larry full-time or, or does she do extra work at the department or, or additional work at the, at the, at the department?
She was really stationed in our office, but she probably worked, um, a good quarter to sometimes even half of her time with DEM. Um, they've done a lot of work in the last, um, year, especially working with a lot of our skilled nursing facilities, um, working with the hospital, those types of things, making sure everyone's plans are updated. Um, she, this position also participates in all the local emergency response drills. So when they had some rail drills recently, um, I think they had another one over actually in Oregon that she participated in. Um, and she works really, really closely with Scott and Larry. I almost said Ernie, Scott and Larry.
And the trainings, they've done a lot of trainings, too, and she's helped facilitate some of those trainings.
Yeah, and she's also, um, generally whoever's in this position also becomes a part of the county's, um, type-three incident management team. So they actually, and lots of them come in with those certifications, but they usually work well with the local IMT as well.
So could you tell me again, uh, how she gets paid or how this, this spot gets paid?
The funding for the position comes from the consolidated contract, the CONCON, um, from the Department of Health.
And if it goes away, then the job goes away, if the contract. I mean, how, how much latitude do you have in this thing? Because I, I, I'll be frank, I, I'm having a hard time figuring out it's a full-time job. But I know this is not an area I feel very, very comfortable in. And, uh, it's always difficult to argue against motherhood and apple pie. You know, you gotta be prepared, but I don't, I don't see how, how this would play into it. So I'm just trying to find out, is this, this grant, this is grant funding that comes in? And within the consolidated grant, uh, how much latitude do you have in there? So there's a pile of money that if you don't use in this, you can use elsewhere?
This is really specific funding in the consolidated contract only for this position. Um, so this one is, is kind of set within that contract. Um, it's, this one's actually, this is actually federal funding that comes from the federal level. It started after nine eleven, um, and is included in the consolidated contract, really specific to this work.
So the, the position is vacant? How long has it been vacant?
Hmm, a little less than a month. And who's doing the work? Which is what it is.
So you're attending all the conferences?
Uh, a lot of the, a lot of them have been virtual meetings at this point, which has been great.
You're, you're getting very comfortable down in the page, basement over at DOG, Eric, all of Justice. Is, is that something that can continue? I mean, you're, you're able to do all your other jobs as well as this?
Um, interesting question.
Because the reason I ask that is because it doesn't make sense if you're able to handle it.
Um, probably not.
Position, so.
I wouldn't be available in the same capacity for DEM, and I know that that position's always been, um, we have an agreement with DEM that they can call that, whoever's in that role twenty-four seven to, um, activate them if there's flood or whatever happens, um, which is, I don't have that type of skill set, so.
And when, when she's not activated or when they're not activated, what do they do?
Uh, a lot of plan review. She also has been helping DEM put on a lot of their classes that they've been doing. I know they've stepped up doing a lot more classes. Um, same with the region, working with, um, the regional public health folks to do the same.
So I'm wondering, can we postpone a decision?
That's obvious, that's up to the board.
We postponed it, are we looking for? If, or you just?
Uh, I'm not, ye- yeah.
Just trying to think about it more, just not sit.
Right, not say no, but think about it more. And, and the more time goes by, the more you'll be able to say, well, actually, we could get by with halftime or something like that, or I'm not even sure that's a possibility, but it, I'm so, I was on the LEPC for a bit in the past, and I, I, it never felt. Look, we've got DEM, we've got Fire District Two, we got a thousand people that are doing this emergency preparedness. And I'm thinking, what exactly does HHS have to do with that that wasn't already incorporated by the paramedics out of F, uh, uh, Fire District Two and, and, and all of that? So I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't see it. And rather than say, no, I'm, I'm saying maybe if you come back to us, you can help me see it.
You think, would it, would it be appropriate, maybe ask Larry what he, what he loses if he does, if we don't have this person?
Exactly what I have in mind, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, would that be all right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jessica? I didn't, I didn't mean to shortchange you there to begin with. Okay, I think if Doug's ready, um, he has a executive session on litigation, and I don't know what he's saying for time. Mike, what do you think? Ten minutes? Okay, so we can adjourn and take care of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Back from executive session on litigation, no decisions were made. We are gonna adjourn to another executive session on contract negotiations. I'm, uh... Fifteen minutes? Okay? Okay. Okay, we're out of executive session, no decisions were made. We're down to any final miscellaneous... Issues. I think we've probably covered them all. Okay. We will adjourn.